Okay. I would like to welcome everybody here today and our viewing audience to the December 27th of 2018 meeting of the City of Danport Zone Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a pager or cellphone, please turn it off now, even if in silent mode it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Jim Reichsraffer, Vice Chair, and my members today are, to my right, Kerry Strahan and Judith Lee. Staff, Matt Flynn and Mallory Hoyt, the Assistant City Attorney. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-member judiciary board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. We normally meet twice each month to hear appeals involving hardships from strict application of current zoning laws. We also grant variance and rules on variety of discretionary permits. Any corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? Motion for approval?
We do approve.
Second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Pass. Any old business? I see none. New business? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You want to come on? Well, I'm sorry. The staff. I got to get the staff. Matt, do you want to?
I think the first point of order is since we have a minimum quorum-
Yes.
-to determine whether or not the applicant wanted to proceed knowing that a unanimous vote would be necessary in order to approve hardship variance request.
Mr. Howard, since there's only three of us, it's, you have to have unanimous approval of your request. Do you want to proceed?
They all have to say yes. Wait till all of them are here.
I mean, can we speak our piece now and then? Or what? Does it matter?
Well, if we decide if you want to proceed with the hearing, then you can present your facts, and Mr. Howard can present his facts, and the staff can present their facts. So it's up to you what you want to do, Mr. Howard.
I think his question was if, can they present facts now and then decide later to back out?
No.
Well, we're not going to back out. I mean, I have my intention of trying to get variance for the business, but I was just wondering if it would make any difference to, you know, to give some information that might be helpful so that that way coming into the next time we meet, the members that are here have heard a little bit and they've had an opportunity to meet.
Well, I would feel uncomfortable not having all five if you decide that you want to have another hearing when you have all five members. So I would, I'm asking you, Mr. Howard, do you want to delay this for, to our next cycle until all five members are here? Then you can present your case, and the staff can present their case. So it's up to you what you want to do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, so just a point of clarification for you, though. So you need to understand that if you proceed today and you don't get the votes that you need, you don't get to come back. You're done. So all three of us, if all three of us decide that we're not going to give you what you need, then you don't get another chance. So if you postpone this and you decide then that you want to come back with five members, you still only, you know, you would have a difference in three to five votes.
Or even four members.
Or even four members, so.
I really don't understand the big issue about this, but what do you think? I just, what is the ramen, when is the next meeting of zoning board of adjustment?
When is it, Matt?
I believe it's the 11th. Now, I'll just say it's up to the board whether or not a special meeting could be held before then. That might be a possibility.
I will not be present for the next meeting. I will be out of state from the 9th through the 16th. I just wanted to pass that. And I sent that information to Scott.
Well. If you want this, I guess, and she's not going to be here, so I guess. We're going to need three of them anyway. I guess we go ahead. It's up to you guys. I know it's a little obscure, but I'm going to lay that I'm on your side. I'm not crazy about the electric stuff, but you need something, frankly. I think we're okay. I feel good about it. I think we should do it. Matt, could we, could you get back? If, well, we're getting ahead of ourselves. We haven't even decided if you want to go forward or wait for all five members to be here.
Well, I know that he's trying to get this location open and running. I think our points are as valid as can be. They're pretty straightforward, so I think we can just do it now.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's good stuff.
Okay. The applicant's here? Staff, can you get your report, please?
I think you need to read the case into the record.
It's been a long time. "The request on HV-18-03 of David Howard on behalf of Ronald Tool at 1301 Harrison Street for hardship variance and increase the height of a freestanding monument sign in exceedance of a loud area pole sign and encouragement in the required set, sign setback. The proposed sign will be approximately 10 feet tall, will be a pole sign versus a monument sign, and will be approximately four feet from the Harrison Street property line on slash eight at the 13th Street property line. Property is owned C2 General Commercial Hilltop Campus Village Overlay District. Section 17.07.050 of HCVOD of the Danport Municipal Code Limits Business Signs in this district with the HCVOD standards to six feet in height, 36 square feet in area. Monument-style sign and 17.45.070 requires a 10-foot setback for both front property line." So, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. This is kind of a complicated case, but really the question comes down to one thing is whether or not an expansion of a nonconforming, already nonconforming sign meets the criteria for hardship variance. I know even though I wasn't at the meeting, the Design Review Board, which has review and approval authority over signage in the Hilltop Campus Village, had heard this case in November. They were, the petition was instructed that the criteria that the DRB works with for freestanding signs, they must be monument-sized. Monument-styled signs design complimentary to the architecture of the building and have some setback and dimensional requirements. That being said, the applicant then consulted staff and determined that in order to get relief from some of the things we're going to be talking about today, it would be essential that they obtain a hardship variance before going back to DRB. So here's the existing sign, nonconforming sign. I'm just going by my memory in the Quad Cities. This structure was built as a Casey's Gas Station, and the sign was probably brought in from a different Crescent Cleaners location sometime a while ago, and I wouldn't want to guess, but it was certainly before 19, or I'm sorry, 2006. Here's the proposed reader board expansion. This is a sign as it occurs today. Now, as you can see, the oval was finished off with the business owner's logo identity. That was actually permitted by the code as a refacing of an existing nonconforming sign. I have to mention, though, that this static reader board was not on the sign previously, thus it is essentially an expansion of a sign that was done without a permit. So I think we need to focus on the reader board. This is a proposed sign, five by thirteen, I'm sorry, five by three, which is 15 square This table kind of show, well, it does show a number of things, a lot of information to sink in. This column here shows what's allowed under the zoning requirements in the Hilltop Campus Village design overlay. Here's what's proposed. So you can see a variance is being requested for height. The sign of the, or the area of the sign is actually below what's allowed, so that would not be, in essence, a variance using pole sign, pole styled sign versus a monument sign. Again, variance required, a setback of four feet versus the required 10. Another variance required setback off of 13th Street, again, another 10-foot setback. So there's a number of variances with the exception of area being proposed. The existing nonconforming sign, just to show you where some of the differences are, the current C2 zoning district allows a 45-foot-high sign. The existing height is actually 18, 85 square feet. Total sign worth 200 is allowed for the entire property. Pole sign allowed, and then the setbacks. But again, the important thing, in order to, I'll say by design, the overlay district for Hilltop Campus Village was intended by the property owners in Hilltop to enhance the, I'll say, the visual landscape of the area and limit the amount of, I'll say, the degree of sign proliferation within the area. We did send 23 notices out. We send notices out to property owners within 200 feet. They're showing the area. We did not receive any statements of opposition. That being said, the role of the zoning board of adjustment is to, is pretty specific in terms of what you can and can't do. It's, your job is not to just simply grant variances by way of conveniences, making sure that the criteria found within the code and backed by state law is actually met. And we believe the three of the findings are particularly challenging for you to recommend approval of, but I wanted to touch base on those real quickly. First one is the reasonable return criteria. I think in essence, hopefully you've read your packet, but I think just simply saying these regulations are tough, I can't meet them is generally not considered a, an issue here, and that does not back up the reasonable return. The unique circumstances. Yes, this building is setback from the street. The building isn't visible until you're very close to it, but the sign is. And another point I think that should be made is that challenge with the building location should have been apparent to anybody who was considering buying the property. So in essence, that's a, we believe that's a self-imposed hardship. And then finally, I guess there's a couple more. Essential characters. So we have a, we have a nonconforming sign that is unique in many ways, but by allowing the expansion of the sign, I think it does provide issues with maintaining and enhancing the character of the Harrison Street corridor as we move forward. And then finally, how will this affect property values? This is always a challenge, but again, when you have existing signage that is significantly out of character, what's both allowed in the Hilltop Campus Overlay District and what other businesses are entitled to do, that may cause issues there. So we believe the, those four criteria make it impossible for staff to recommend approval, and we would recommend denial. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading that. Go ahead, Judith.
Could you turn?
On? There we go. Could you please describe the monument? What is expected with a monument-type sign?
Well, a monument sign is not simply on poles. It has a base that, according to the Hilltop standards and standards throughout the city, must be architecturally compatible. So an example of a monument sign, I would use the example of the Harris Salon that was just in the same block, but somebody hit that sign in the fall and that needs to be replaced. So low scale, and again, as I mentioned, six feet high maximum, and not basically a tall sign.
So the existing oval sign is grandfathered in? Is that what I understand?
Clearly not. Correct.
Okay. So what they've done to just that, the green sign that you showed, the picture, that is acceptable?
That's refacing a nonconforming sign. They have an expanded design.
And one other thing that I'd just like to reinforce that you said, per the code regarding a hardship variance, it says that the stripped application of any provision of this title would result in a peculiar and practical difficulties and clearly demonstrable hardship upon the owner of such property amounting to a practical confiscation of the property thereof and not a mere inconvenience to the owner. So I think it's important that, we need to consider that, as the court and the code has said, that this would, if we do not approve the sign, that it would be a practical confiscation of the use of that property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to reinforce that, that that's what the code says, and that's our job. And I just wanted to make sure I understand that with the green oval already accepted, we're only focusing on, it would be taking down the thing where you put the numbers on?
Digital.
And it'd be digital? And it'd be both sides? Okay. Okay, we can ask that later. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Well, if you want this, I guess, and she's not going to be here, so I guess.
We're going to need three of them anyway.
Yes, we go ahead. It's up to you guys. I know it's a little obscure, but I'm going to lay that I'm on your side. I'm not crazy about the electric stuff, but you need something, frankly. I think we're okay. I feel good about it. I think we should do it. Matt, could we, could you get back? If, well, we're getting ahead of ourselves. We haven't even decided if you want to go forward or wait for all five members to be here.
Well, I know that he's trying to get this location open and running. I think our points are as valid as can be. They're pretty straightforward, so I think we can just do it now.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's good stuff.
Okay. The applicant's here? Staff, can you get your report, please?
I think you need to read the case into the record.
It's been a long time. "The request on HV-18-03 of David Howard on behalf of Ronald Tool at 1301 Harrison Street for hardship variance and increase the height of a freestanding monument sign in exceedance of a loud area pole sign and encouragement in the required set, sign setback. The proposed sign will be approximately 10 feet tall, will be a pole sign versus a monument sign, and will be approximately four feet from the Harrison Street property line on slash eight at the 13th Street property line. The property is owned C2 General Commercial Hilltop Campus Village Overlay District. Section 17.07.050 of HCVOD of the Danport Municipal Code Limits Business Signs in this district with the HCVOD standards to six feet in height, 36 square feet in area. Monument-style sign and 17.45.070 requires a 10-foot setback for both front property line." So, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. This is kind of a complicated case, but really the question comes down to one thing is whether or not an expansion of a nonconforming, already nonconforming sign meets the criteria for hardship variance. I know even though I wasn't at the meeting, the Design Review Board, which has review and approval authority over signage in the Hilltop Campus Village Village overlay district, had heard this case in November. They were, the petition was instructed that the criteria that the DRB works with for freestanding signs, they must be monument-sized. Monument-styled signs design complimentary to the architecture of the building and have some setback and dimensional requirements. That being said, the applicant then consulted staff and determined that in order to get some, get relief from some of the things we're going to be talking about today, it would be essential that they obtain a hardship variance before going back to DRB. So here's the, here's the existing sign, nonconforming sign. I'm just going by my memory in the Quad Cities. This, this structure was built as a Casey's Gas Station, and the sign was probably brought in from a different Crescent Cleaners location sometime a while ago, and I wouldn't want to guess, but it was certainly before 19, or I'm sorry, 2006. Here's the proposed reader board expansion. This is a sign as it occurs today. Now, as you can see, the oval was finished off with the business owner's logo identity. That was actually permitted by the code as a refacing of an existing nonconforming sign. I have to mention, though, that this static reader board was not on the sign previously, thus it is essentially an expansion of a sign that was done without a permit. So I think we need to focus on the reader board. This is a proposed sign, five by thirteen, I'm sorry, five by three, which is 15 square feet. This table kind of show, well, it does show a number of things, a lot of information to sink in. Here, this column here shows what's allowed under the zoning requirements in the Hilltop Campus Village design overlay. Here's what's proposed. So you can see a variance is being requested for height. The sign of the, or the area of the sign is actually below what's allowed, so that would not be, in essence, a variance using pole sign, pole styled sign versus a monument sign. Again, variance required, a setback of four feet versus the required 10. Another variance required setback off of 13th Street, again, another 10-foot setback. So there's a number of variances with the exception of area being proposed. The existing nonconforming sign, just to show you where some of the differences are, the current C2 zoning district allows a 45-foot-high sign. The existing height is actually 18, 85 square feet. Total sign worth 200 is allowed for the entire property. A pole sign allowed, and then the setbacks. But again, the important thing, in order to, I'll say by design, the overlay district for Hilltop Campus Village was intended by the property owners in Hilltop to enhance the, I'll say, the visual landscape of the area and limit the amount of, I'll say, the degree of sign proliferation within the area. We did send 23 notices out. We send notices out to property owners within 200 feet. They're showing the area. We did not receive any, any statements of opposition. That being said, the role of the zoning board of adjustment is to, is pretty specific in terms of what you can and can't do. It's, your job is not to just simply grant variances by way of conveniences, making sure that the criteria found within the code and backed by state law is actually met. And we believe the three of the findings are particularly challenging for you to recommend approval of, but I wanted to touch base on those real quickly. First one is the reasonable return criteria. I think in essence, hopefully you've read your packet, but I think just simply saying these regulations are tough, I can't meet them is generally not considered a, an issue here, and that does not back up the reasonable return. The unique circumstances. Yes, this building is setback from the street. The building isn't visible until you're very close to it, but the sign is. And another point I think that should be made is, is that, that challenge with the building location should have been apparent to anybody who was considering buying the property. So in essence, that's a, we believe that's a self-imposed hardship. And then finally, I guess there's a couple more. Essential characters. So we have a, we have a nonconforming sign that is unique in many ways, but by allowing the expansion of the sign, I think it, it does provide issues with maintaining and enhancing the character of the Harrison Street corridor as we move forward. And then finally, how will this affect property values? This is always a challenge, but again, when you have existing signage that is significantly out of character, what's both allowed in the Hilltop Campus Overlay District and what other businesses are entitled to do, that may cause issues there. So we believe the, those four criteria make it impossible for staff to recommend approval, and we would recommend denial. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading that. Go ahead, Judith.
Could you turn?
On? There we go. Could you please describe the monument? What is expected with a monument-type sign?
Well, a monument sign is not simply on poles. It has a base that, according to the Hilltop standards and standards throughout the city, must be architecturally compatible. So an example of a monument sign, I would use the example of the Harris Salon that was just in the same block, but somebody hit that sign in the fall and that needs to be replaced. So low scale, and again, as I mentioned, six feet high maximum, and not basically a tall sign.
So the existing oval sign is grandfathered in? Is that what I understand?
Clearly not. Correct.
Okay. So what they've done to just that, the green sign that you showed, the picture, that is acceptable?
That's refacing a nonconforming sign. They have an expanded design.
Okay. And one other thing that I'd just like to reinforce that you said, per the code regarding a hardship variance, it says that the stripped application of any provision of this title would result in a peculiar and practical difficulties and clearly demonstrable hardship upon the owner of such property amounting to a practical confiscation of the property thereof and not a mere inconvenience to the owner. So I think it's important that, we need to consider that, as the court and the code has said, that this would, if we do not approve the sign, that it would be a practical confiscation of the use of that property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to reinforce that, that that's what the code says, and that's our job. And I just wanted to make sure I understand that with the green oval already accepted, we're only focusing on, it would be taking down the thing where you put the numbers on?
Digital.
And it'd be digital? And it'd be both sides? Okay. Okay, we can ask that later. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name's David Howard. 1225 East River.
Okay. Mr. Howard, you want to give us your name and address, please?
It's going to create a huge problem there. It's going to create a lot of hazards as far as that traffic goes. I wanted to show you guys that. And the other one is the pic. If you lowered it, you can see the black box that I made. And the truck, if it parks in front of that sign, you're not going to be able to see it. Understand, the zoning is actually getting ready to be rewritten. I was told by this, by Ryan, that they're actually going to make that six-foot a 10-foot heights. The new monument zoning ordinance is going to be 10-foot in height. Is that correct?
I don't, if Ryan told you that, I believe, I don't have the new code memorized yet.
Ryan has said that the new height restriction was going to be 10-foot. But either way, the existing sign, we want to reface it. We want to keep it. It's been an icon there since 1960 was the year he was looking for earlier. He re-faced that already. It's, it looks nice. We want to replace the marquee board with a digital sign. So there's that picture there. And then this is actually with the proposed sign. If the message center goes there, that's what it would look like, as is today. Absolutely beautiful. I went around the area today and some of the newer signs actually in that particular area. I know this one's on a building, but there was a variant, a design approval board for a sign that was across the street from this one. This went up a month later after that sign was denied actually on the building. And the next sign I'm going to show you here is the V-Tech gas station, which is way higher than six feet in the air with a full color message board right down the street in that same zoning area. With that being said, as far as the sign goes, I can answer any questions if you have any questions as far as how the signs build or any particulars that you guys would want to know on that.
You're supposed to recognize me. I have a question for Matt, a technicality. What is the role of the Hilltop Design Approval Board and how does it relate to a city approval board related to zoning? Is it a, just a neighborhood thing? Is it a...
Yep. The, the City of Davenport created a Hilltop Campus Village Design Overlay District. That was basically designed to, as I said, enhance the aesthetic, to change the character of the Hilltop area for the better. This, that resulted from dialogue with Hilltop Campus Village, the Main Street Group and business owners within the area. But the Hilltop Campus Village Design Overlay is a, is part of the city zoning ordinance and is charged, the Design Review Board is charged with approving a number of the design, I'll say, elements within that area, including freestanding signs, be it monument signs.
Okay, so it does have the force of the city behind it.
It's, it's the zoning ordinance that has the rule of law behind it.
Yes, okay. How does the city feel about, we now have a disagreement, apparently, on whether that sign was present and when it was present, the existing marquee sign? How do we deal with that?
I don't know how long the sign was, was the existing marquee sign or reader board sign was off. I know it was off for some time.
Okay, so we are still focusing on the marquee?
Yes.
And assuming that it, it's requiring a new decision? It's not grandfathered in?
Well, even if it's, it's, we have, we've made an interpretation that changing a static menu board to a digital sign is, is a change of use.
Okay, okay. I understand, thank you.
The third pole that you can see in these pictures, I'm going to pull back up here if I may, was actually mounted years ago just specifically for that marquee sign. That marquee sign and that, and the second pole in was the reason that that pole was put in is to hold that. Like I said, it's been there for years. I don't know when it was there. I'm not, we're not the ones that put it in, but it was definitely there.
I have one more. Oh, no, I have a question. No, wait, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I apologize.
No.
Go ahead.
Why did you make the determination to withdraw from working with the Design Approval Board and come directly to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Ryan Rusnak said that the sign was non-conforming. In order for it to come into a conforming zone, in order for it to become conforming, they would need to lower it. And that's when the hardships was going to come into place. You're going to block the view coming down Harrison on 13th. You're going to have blocked signage too, Ron. And since the, you're not touching anything on that structure except for removing the marquee signs. They're considering that a change, so it's a change in there. But we're not trying to raise it or do anything. It's already there. It's been there since 1960. So we just simply wanted to put that up without causing the other headaches that come with it, the blocking of Harrison Street, the being blocked to be seen. He's there to do business. He's there to create the property value, increase the property value, make it look nice, you know, to help the entire Hilltop District. That's all he's trying to do is improve the property.
And I have one more question. Could, could you please go back to the picture that you had that showed a lower sign? And could you tell me the measurements of the, of the drawing that you put in that?
This is your, or the other one?
Not that one.
This is the one?
Okay, is that the, you said it was going to be what size?
All right, so if you went to conforming, all I did with this box here is across the poles, if we went to existing and went down, this box is six-foot tall. So to the top of that black box is where six-foot, six-foot would be.
But that's not what you're proposing to do?
No, not at all. We don't want to do that. If we do, if we make this conforming go to six-foot tall, that's what's going to happen.
But, you know, conformance means six-foot or less. And you're proposing to put in something that's less?
The max height is six-foot tall.
Right. But you're proposing what size?
A 15-square foot and it's...
Three by five?
Yeah, three by five. And we're requesting to put it, may I walk up here? Like I was showing you, it's going to replace, that's the backside of that marquee board that you see, that white piece up there?
Yeah.
It's going to replace that.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is actually the worst case and not at all what you're proposing to do?
Yeah, this is worst case. If we have to go to conforming and we have to go six-foot tall, monument style means that hole has to be blocked in in a monument style sign. You're going to create blockage going up Harrison Street.
I think if I understand right, Matt, that they don't have to go to six feet, they can put in three by five. It's whatever is allowed or less, correct?
Yeah, as, as, respect to that element, but I should point out that a, this is assuming a monument sign in the existing non-conforming signs' location. A new monument sign would have to, at a minimum, be set back 10 feet from the property line along Harrison Street and 10 feet from 13th Street and, and respect the, a 30-foot vision triangle to ensure that you're able to see down Harrison Street safely. So I'm not even sure if a 10, 10-foot setbacks from both property lines would be, would, would meet that requirement. You'd have to do a measurement.
You'd definitely need another, we'd have to file for another hardship variance to make that sign even seen if we moved it back. Because this building's set back. And the mother buildings right next to him, they're all roadside buildings, so. This is only feasible, the only feasible place to put a sign.
I guess one other question and then I'll stop. Whether you had, whether you had the marquee, replaced the marquee with a digital or not, if you did not have one, would it amount to a practical confiscation and confiscation in the use of your property, even if you didn't have one? Could you still operate your business with your new sign?
Could we still operate the business?
Yeah, with the oval sign, not the new sign, the oval sign, I'm sorry.
The oval sign's already there.
That's what I mean, yeah.
You could operate business with the existing sign. Every business owner goes into business though to increase value, profitability and tax return to not only themselves but the city. You know, he's there to do the best he can as the business. I believe if he did not put the sign up, you know, the lack of being able to advertise even with a marquee, people don't read them anymore. So the ability to be seen nine times out of 10 is more important than being seen maybe three times out of 10 for the business owner's sake. So the answer to your question's hard to answer. It's not just a yes or no. There's a lot of factors you need to put in there with the visibility of that location.
Well, that's the interesting thing about this board is it's a semi-judicial.
Right, for sure.
Yes. That's why I asked why you chose not to go back and work on the sign itself.
Simply because this is what they wanted, this is what Ryan wanted. And he made it very clear to them before we even had an opportunity to talk.
Okay, well, let's, and I'll wait to hear the rest of the presentations.
All righty. And then he was going over some things. I don't know how to get back there on there right now, but there is some other things in that packet. We did answer those questions for him in those, in that packet. So I have them on my computer if we want to go over them. In the meantime, I'll go ahead and let you guys. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't need it. Mr. Howard. Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. My name's Scott Tonncliff and I'm the Director of the Hilltop Campus Village, which is located at 122 East 15th Street in Davenport, just a few blocks north of this. "In favor" is a little strong, I guess, although I'm citing, in this case, with the owner because of the unique features of this particular property as it relates to the Hilltop. I think there's a validity that says if it's any less than the height of 10 feet, if it's only six feet off the ground, it cannot be seen from Harrison Street. And, you know, back in 1960, or whenever that sign was put up, you could see it coming from the north and coming from the south on Harrison. Well, 10 years later, that was made into a one-way. So the primary visibility has to come from traffic coming from Harrison and traffic, to a much lesser degree, coming on 13th. This particular property is very unique within the Hilltop, which is why I find myself in kind of the awkward position of saying, we really do have a hardship for this. It relates, I think, in large part to the visibility issue. If you had a monument sign that was six feet high, it would be blocked by parking that's, that's proposed. And you could see that on the original aerial that was on. The fact that this particular building is set well back... Ah-ha. No, it's okay. This building is unique in that it's set well back of the other zero lot line buildings along there, which is what obscures its visibility as you're coming down Harrison. So they need the signage in order for somebody to see what type of business it is before they're actually driving by. Now, you might ask, is a tattoo a destination or is it an impulse buy? Probably not. Nobody's going to drive by and say, oh, by golly, I got to get my tattoo, and then they'll pull in. But they do need to have the visibility if they're looking for that business to know how to get there. So some kind of signage on that corner with something elevated, in this instance, needs be done. Where Judith mentioned the judicial aspect of things, I think is valid. Whether it's an oval sign or whether it's an electric sign, like Dave suggested, that's kind of a subject call. Myself, I think this is a beautiful green sign. I think the work that they've done on the building is terrific. And I think if you had any sign that was six feet tall and 10 feet back from 13th and Harrison, you would still have a traffic obstruction and you'd still not be able to see it if there were cars parked there. So because it's set back as a building and because of its unique location and because it's blocked by a lot of the zero lot lines, I think there would be some kind of a hardship. Would they go out of business? In my opinion, no. I think that green sign with the demograph, or the, the design there tells everybody where it is. So if you want to do an electric sign, that would be anybody's call. I know at the north end, there is a banner sign that's up, and to me, that needs to come down. It's another big green sign. You only need one, especially when you've got it that size. But all I wanted to say is how appreciative we are that somebody has stepped forward to buy this property, which incidentally has been vacant for a long time. And we've had architects and others come in to try and say, what can we do to spark this area? So we're pleased that Ron and his group have come forward to invest. And I'm frankly neutral about the electronic sign, except to say that if there is an electronic sign there, it's got to be more than six feet tall or it's serving no practical purpose. That's all I got. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ron O'Toole. My address, my home address, is 242 Forest Lane in Sherard. I live out at Fire Lake with my family out there. Just a little bit of background, I opened my first, this business in 1999 in Rock Island on 18th Avenue. And I'm celebrating my 20th year in business here in the Quad Cities. And it's been a really great road for my wife and I and my family. And so we purchased the building in Rock Island three years ago. And that, in 2010, I had moved over to Davenport, opening a second location. Purchasing this building is kind of completing our dream of owning our own buildings and businesses rather than leasing. And we've been really, really happy to be a part of the Quad City business community. We're very excited about being a part of the Hilltop community. My current location that we're moving out of is next door here. It's, I've just been next door here for nine years. When I, when I found this building, the sign was, was a huge part of, of why we liked the building. Owning my building in Rock Island, I also dealt with a little bit of variants and non-conforming signs because the sign at that building was also, it was a little over the sidewalk and they don't allow that anymore. And so I did have to kind of deal with this type of situation when I, when I bought the building and, or when I opened in Rock Island and eventually took it over. But I've maintained that sign well and it's grandfathered in, which is what I would like to mention should be with this sign. And the reason why is, the sign is, as you've seen, it was built many years ago. And as Dave had mentioned, the, the third pole that's on the sign does not hold up the oval of the sign at all. It's, it's, it was put there strictly to put a marquee on there. And I would like you guys to know that if I am not allowed to put this sign up, that I'll just keep the old marquee on there. I don't have a problem. Dave mentioned that it wasn't there and then, and now it is. The reason why was, I, I took it down because I was excited about putting this new sign up. And we were doing a lot of work. We've, we've worked effortlessly on this property. I've spent tons of money on it and hours, three months. I took over the building in September of 24th and literally today is opening day. And the health inspection just went through. It's just been a roller coaster ride. But I would keep the marquee sign and I can put the letters up there. But I just want to, I just want to say that moving into that community, I've had to work strenuously to push that neighborhood back. And I'm, with the best interest, if you've seen either one of my locations, I want them to look good and I want to be at the top of my business chain and my business and what I do. And I am also planning to put a sign in that, in Rock Island on that building as well. That's the future. You know, I've, I've studied this area and I've went up and down 61 and I've got over 17 pictures of businesses much like myself that, and I do realize that, that Hilltop is, is unique to itself. I don't mean to say that it's not. But to have these types of signs, and this is where the future is going, and I want to be at the top of my business. I want to, I want to do the best I can to do as well as I can in my business. But more than anything, I need to push this neighborhood back. Every day, Central High School is right just, just south of me and thousands of kids in the morning and the afternoon come and go from that school. We don't want any of them to get hurt. They, they come right across that street and, and any type of a sign. That sign was built because of that. It needs to be up high where it's not blocking any view of maybe a car coming out and hitting somebody and that type of stuff. I mean, I think that the sign was, was built many years ago. I think it should be grandfathered in. And all I'm proposing that I'm allowed to do is to take an old, raddier-looking sign that I would have to go out in the cold and put letters on with something new and respectfully make sure that I use it within any, any textbook of, of the confines of what would be allowed on an electronic sign. But I just want to thank you for meeting with myself tonight and David's worked really hard with me here. My opportunity to meet Scott, he came down in person and introduced himself and took a look at the sign with me. He's part of Hilltop. I'm, I'm excited about being part of Hilltop and it is in my best effort to make it look as good as possible. And I'm hoping that some of these businesses around me get taken over by businesses that want to be real businesses. Not pawn shops, not grocery stores, second hands with people in the parking lot selling drugs. I mean, it's going to take work and I need your help. And what I'm trying to do is put something up there that's going to make this look like, this is Davenport. This is the new direction of our city. We want it to look new. We want it to look modern. I want to thank you for your time tonight.
I have a question that I'd like to ask. Looked like you were going towards... Matt, I have a question, another question for you. Based on this presentation and, and the others, and the question of changing it from a marquee to a digital seems to be a key part of the decision we need to consider. If they were to keep the, the marquee the same size, the same location and upgrade it, because yes, it is a little ratty, the way it is older, is that within the, the code and the overlay?
Well, that'd just be maintaining an existing non-conforming sign. The request is to replace that sign with a digital sign. And as I had indicated, we have, we as a staff have made the interpretation that that is in essence, an expansion of a, of a non-conformity.
So the opportunity then perhaps for the applicant would be to consider replacing it with a better-looking marquee? Because if the concern is putting the letters up in the cold, that's purely a convenience and outside the, the code as it is written.
Well, again, I, and maybe I'll defer to our attorney, that's not, that's not the request. I don't think that's the board's purview to, in essence, negotiate for something other than what's actually been requested.
I understand. Okay, I needed clarification on that. Thank you very much, Matt.
The only final comments I have is really just the hardships that would be created if we did. I mean, we could put up a lighted sign and a digital sign that's allowed in that area. You know, if we wanted to move it back 10 feet and do it and keep it six feet or wait till a new code written and make it 10 feet, we can do it. We can put a digital sign there, they're allowed. We can do a lighted sign there, they're allowed. We're only requesting to leave it here for the convenience of not only the customers that are trying to find the location and the customer and the business owner himself, for the safety of the public. It's the only, like I said, legitimate way to put a sign at that location. If you set it back and do a lighted sign, you're not, it's, he's going to eliminate parking spots. He's going to eliminate visibility still with that setback. People coming up that stop sign, if you notice, it's like forever from Harrison Street. I just looked at that today. I'm like, this is ridiculous. They need to put that a little closer anyway. But honestly, it's the only visible way to do it. So, you know, it's not like they're not allowed to have one. I'm not, we're not asking to put one in a historic district, you know? They are allowed to have it. It's just a matter of where and how high. So that's my final statement. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So I just have a, just a, just a comment. So typically this board, you know, people come here, you know, you have to meet certain criteria. And to be quite honest, most of the time, if you only have one criteria that you don't meet, a lot of times you don't get the very... if you only have one criteria that you don't meet, a lot of times you don't get the variance. You presented a very interesting case and I'm glad that you're at, uh, Hilltop. But there's, you don't meet four of the criteria. So, it, it really ties, it ties my hands to be able to give you the variance with what we're obligated to do. So, I just want to, want you to know that before we vote. Thank you.
And then I would like to say, what you've done with the building looks very nice. And your sign is very nice, I was pleased to see it. I mean, you look at the comparison with what it was before and what it is now. You've done a really nice, nice job with the green sign.
I guess I'd like to put some comments in. You know, way back in 1977, I had a convenience store, Casey's General Store. And it was in Bettendorf and I went through the same thing as far as in front of the Board of Adjustment. And Dick Knox, which he bought the property where your property is now, put a convenience store there, it was a Casey's General Store. Again, we, uh, came in front of the Board of Adjustment. And they questioned all the comments that you had about the traffic not, when it comes down Harrison Street, you can't see the signs. And we were granted a variance with a bigger sign with Casey's General Store. And we had a lighted gas sign and a big sign, you, you all know what Casey's General Store signs look like. And they had a lighted reader board. And we didn't have any trouble and it concerns me when you're requesting a, a lighted LED sign to improve the property. And that concerns me that we granted, uh, a variance for the big Casey's General Store sign, but we can't, we're looking into granting a, a variance for a little three by five sign, LED sign. That concerns me. And, uh, so, I wanted to bring that comment, I have history with that and so, um, the traffic is a big problem with that building in front of your building, very much so. And you're improving the sign with this LED sign because it does bring traffic in. History has shown that, uh, reader boards are no longer really great to have on a, on a building. And, uh, so with these LED signs, they, they really bring in a lot of traffic. And so, that's the little history that I know about that property and so, um, that's my comments, thank you.
You said that was 1977 when that happened? Yeah, that was a while ago.
I move to approve.
My second?
Ray Hall?
No.
Lee?
No.
Rife Stroffer?
Yes. Motion doesn't pass and, um, sorry.
It's a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
My second? Aye?
Thank you.